Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. But prior to the start of our meeting today, we have a special presentation and it has to do with Parkinson's disease. And we have two of our representatives here that are going to kind of give us an update on what's going on this month. And Crisanka Christodas, right? And also Rich Miller. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys and bring us up to date and then I'll read our proclamation.
The Iowa chapter of the American Parkinson's Association is a statewide agency aimed at delaying the disease. We have several support groups. We have referral centers and a great deal of people that can give support for all levels of Parkinson's involvement. We do 35 different support groups across the state and we appreciate Des Moines' acknowledgement and awareness of the Parkinson's disease and thank you for your time.
Sure. Well, my name is Crisanka Christodas and I'm the director of the Iowa Parkinson's Disease Information and Referral Center located at Unity Point Health at Methodist. And yeah, April is Parkinson's Awareness Month. We estimate there are about 20,000 or so Iowans living with Parkinson's disease. So we really want to get the word out there that we are there as a resource, a free information source for people, so people can call with questions, any referrals they need to specialists, doctors, support groups, any question at all that needs to be asked about Parkinson's, we're there as a resource. We definitely want people to know about that. We do have a PSA that's going to be airing tomorrow and we have several events going on in the month of April, too. So if you're interested, it's www.apdaIowa.org and you can also find us on Facebook.
Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Parkinson's disease is a progressive disorder of the central nervous system affecting more than 1.5 million people in the United States. And whereas American Parkinson's Disease Association has sought to ease the burden, find the cure through research, patient and family services, education and sponsorship through a network of chapters, information referral centers, and support groups throughout the United States. And whereas the city of Des Moines recognizes the efforts of the Iowa chapter of American Parkinson's Disease Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Parkinson's disease, thereby improving the quality of life for those living with this disease. And whereas the world, the nation, and the city of Des Moines observe Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in April 2014, now therefore I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, recognize 53 years of indispensable services of the American Parkinson's Disease Association and do hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. And I want to thank all of you for everything that you do and thank you for coming down this way to meet. All right. We'll get started with our meeting. Thank you very much. (applause) All right. We'll get started with our meeting. Thank you very much. (applause) All right. We'll get started with our meeting. Thank you very much. (applause) All right. We'll get started with our meeting. Thank you very much.
Seven, yes.
All right. That takes us directly now to item five. Item five is a consideration of a new Class C liquor license for Galaxy's Bar and Grill at 2718 Douglas Avenue. This item was continued from March 24th of 2014. And Councilmember Gray, this is your ward, so I will ask you to speak first, please.
Thank you. I think we wanted to have the applicant here. Did the applicant make it?
Right.
Could you step up? There's some issues I wanted to discuss with you. Sure can. Will you give us your name and address?
My name is Mina Ademovic. Address, 350766, 3 Urbaneale, Iowa, 50322.
Thank you. You're applying to go right back in and keep Galaxy's Bar and Grill open?
Yes.
Okay. I want to read a couple of things here. This came from the neighbors. It came from Des Moines Police. And I want to understand that this is not going to happen again. First of all, for being a restaurant, a loud ban, so loud that the neighbors had to call police to turn it down. That's not a very good business to run in this kind of a neighborhood. So are we going to have loud bans in there again?
I don't know why be before. I know what I'm doing and next time. It's my problem. I'm be sure don't have any problem.
Well, we want to make sure.
Yep.
Also, neighbors reported parking on the sidewalk, parking in the right-of-way down there, parking in the right-of-way inhibits cars driving down the street. Are you going to do a better job of policing that kind of activity?
Yes.
And finally, you're going to be trying to operate this as a restaurant? I want to know when the city wants to have an audit, that we're going to get a response this time, because this time, there was no response, no nothing. It's almost like you don't even want to acknowledge that the city was looking over your shoulder. So am I going to get assurance that if the city says, "I want an audit here," you're going to respond?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure, because the neighbors are all upset about this, and we want to make sure that they get treated. We want to make sure that you can run a good, clean business. So we want to make sure that this is a, you guys can work together and create a good environment in that neighborhood. So if that's the case, then I'll move that we accept their liquor license.
Okay, it's been moved. Ms. Hensley?
I have a couple of questions for you. What's your experience in running a bar/restaurant or restaurant/bar? And be specific.
Can I say what she's going to say?
Sure.
Sorry. What was her question again?
My question is, I want to know what her experience is in running a restaurant/bar, and be specific. Have you run a restaurant before?
Not there, in Bosnia.
We, she's, we're from Bosnia, so we ran a, we had a restaurant in Bosnia.
So you had a restaurant in Bosnia?
Yeah.
And how, and how long did you run that restaurant?
Over 20 years.
Over 20 years?
Yeah.
And so it was a full-time restaurant, open to the public?
Yeah.
And what's your relationship to the individual that owned this or had the liquor license previously?
My son.
And have you worked in this restaurant? This restaurant that we're talking about tonight for the liquor license?
No.
And so what's your plan in the future? Are you going to be onsite on a daily basis?
Yes, I am.
And so you actually have capital invested in this restaurant?
Yeah, I'm, I'm work to there every day. And I'm, I'm think to, sometimes I need help for something I'm hiding to the experienced people.
My question, though, was, do you actually have capital invested in the restaurant? Money?
Yep.
And going back to Mr. Gray's question or discussion, have you been asked by the city to actually develop a good neighbor agreement? And did you say you would not do it, or you just did not follow up on it? I wasn't sure about that bill?
No, we just talked with Jeff about, that's what I was leading to, Chris. We want to make sure that your neighbors know that you want to become a good neighbor. So we have a form that we're going to ask you to sign, that you'll abide by the rules, you'll do, you'll run that as a restaurant, you will, you'll keep the place clean, you will monitor the traffic out there, and run it as a good, clean business. Would you have any problems signing something like that?
Yes, I do.
So do you want that signed before you actually make the motion to approve?
Can we do it pending?
Pending, so that they don't have?
I'd go with that, yes.
One last question, then. Will your son actually be running the restaurant, working in the restaurant?
No, never.
He's not allowed there anymore.
He's not allowed there?
Those were your words, not hers.
Okay, so I think that we could make your motion, subject to receipt of the signed agreement.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Seven, yes?
Oh, I know.
Okay, takes us to item 7A. 7A is ordering construction of the following. A is a fire department administrative parking lot, receiving of bids 422 of 14, setting the date of hearing for 5, 5 of 14. The construction estimate is $80,000. This item was continued from March 24th of 2014. And Council Communication number 14-140. Joe?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment about this. First of all, I've got to give kudos to our fire department and our chief. I tell you, for that Yonkers fire, I went down there Saturday morning, very professional. We are so lucky that no lives were lost there, that it's amazing. And that's due because we have great training. And my understanding, that I got more information about this parking lot, this is for a training prop. And obviously, the key to success is preparation. And I'm well aware of that in anything that you do, and I want to give them the ample opportunity to be able to train. So I, I'm for this project, since we are going to be using it for training, for the prop. I think that's a, that's a, that's a great thing, and we need to continue on doing that. So I'll move item 7A.
All right, item 7A has been moved. Any other discussion? Seeing none.
Seven, yes?
All right, takes us to item 14. Item 14 is a public improvement, and it is communication from Lamberty Concrete of Iowa Inc., requesting permission to sublet certain items on the 2013 sidewalk replacement program. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked a question on this one earlier from staff, and I can appreciate the answer. However, what I was trying to get at was, who will be responsible to ensure that these employees are not 1099 contractors, that the taxes will be paid, the workman's comp will be paid, accident insurance is provided, OSHA is followed, so on and so forth.
Mr. Manager, would you like to quickly address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Mr. Moore, you asked me this, we had a conversation about it earlier today, and I had a chance to visit with our city engineer about that. Under this kind of a deal, the obligations of, falls to the subcontractor. There are not provisions in our contract unless Mr. Lester says to the contrary that allow the city to mandate those kinds of actions that you and I talked about earlier. So I can't, I can't say to you that the subcontractor, that those kinds of things fall on to the subcontractor to do those things that you're talking about, like workers' comp or other provisions that would relate to the employees or the labors for the subcontractor. It's, and it's not, and it's part of our contract, so we couldn't really hold the general contractor responsible either.
Could we see to it in the future that is part of the contract? You know, if they're not paying income tax, how are we going to look? It's one of our jobs. And I would almost bet that if they're not paying the workman's comp or following OSHA, and there's a bad accident, we're going to be involved in that.
Mr. Moore, if you put it in the form of a motion for us to research that and provide some recommendations back to you, I'd be happy to do that, as opposed to directing us to do it without that kind of research. I feel like we need to examine it and give you the options and let the council know the implications of such a requirement. I would imagine it would be a fairly significant responsibility to add into our contracts to do it, but nonetheless, if that's your will, we'll take a look at it and report back.
I'm going to move 14 with that as an addition to it. That'll be referred back to staff to take a look and make recommendations on this in the future.
And can I just add to that, that we need to have the fiscal implications of that, and how we see that impacting future bids?
Do that.
Thank you.
You know, a comment, there's really federal regulations governing those things, and I'm sure they need to comply with that if they're going to be in business, so.
Agree.
Seven, yes?
Land and property transactions, number 19. This is an authorization to proceed with the acquisition of the necessary right-of-way and easements for the Lee Town Creekway Channel Improvement. Council Communication number 14-139. Mr. Moore?
I'm pleased to see this on here. We've been speaking about this for three or four years now. Finally, we're going to start to see some relief from East 31st and Raccoon South. Hopefully, some of the damming effect there will give us relief in the fairgrounds neighborhood. I was wondering if we could get a report, as there's one section left after this, and it runs from East 30th and University, basically underneath the state fairgrounds, up to where this project begins. And could we just get an update on that, so we could report it back to not only the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association? Iowa State Fairgrounds has indicated that they've got work they'd like to do at the west end of the fairgrounds, and they can't start it until we've got that final segment done.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Moore, Councilmembers, my understanding is this action tonight is part of the first phase of this, of this, of an overall improvement to improve the flood drainage in that area. And if you'd like, if it was your motion to have us sort of talk about the overall plan?
It's yours.
And how this first phase of work fits into the overall, we'd be happy to do that and report it back to you.
I'll move 19 with the addition of reporting it back to staff for report on the next phase.
I think it's a great plan. Get, opening on the far outside, so when this water gets there, it's not going to be shut off, then come back and work this way, so it opens up all that area down through there. And that's a good plan.
Well, it's all Jeb Brewer and his staff that came up with it, so credit goes out there.
Coleman?
Seven, yes?
Okay, now we go to item 31. Bids from the following. A is Clark Mosquito Controlled Products. J. Lyle Clark III, who's the president, for an annual contract with two additional 12-month renewal options to furnish mosquito-controlled products and application services is requested by the Community Development Neighborhood Inspection Division. The amount of the annual cost is $35,000. Twelve bids were mailed, and five bids were received. Council Communication number 14-147. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we could have somebody from the department that's purchasing this come up to the microphone. Looking at the bid sheet on this, the only thing I see that's really different is only one company bid on aerial application.
Mr. Moore, members of council, Phil Delafield, Community Development Director. Yes, Mr. Moore, there was one bid on the aerial drop. There were issues with some of the products that were being specified by the other drop suppliers. Those products drift farther. The product that we had selected doesn't drift as much, so it's an environmental issue, and there was only one bidder on that item.
If, normally, if we picked one of the other bidders, would they hire Clark to do the aerial drop?
Unsure of that one. Mr. Moore?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move 31A.
Item 31A's been moved. Any other comments? Seeing none?
Seven, yes?
All right, that completes the consent agenda. Takes us to item 34. Item 34 is amending Chapter 114 Municipal Code, submitting traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 14-150. A is a signage change around the McKee Education Center at Easton Boulevard, East 39th Street, and East 39th Court. And B is parking restrictions in the north side of Grand Avenue between 15th and 16th Street. Is there anyone here? Does any comments on that?
Mayor, if nobody's here, I would move it, and move the second and third readings according to our non-prepublished rules, save paper and effort in coming meetings, if nobody opposes.
It's good. The school district's going to start using McKee again, so they need some changes out there.
Seven, yes?
All right, item 35 was not used this evening, and item 36, which is a request regarding some property, on an explanation for right-of-redemption on 13th Street, that has been withdrawn. That, let's. Item 45. Item 45, we had a meeting, council, with one of our city employees, and this item deals with specifically the appointment of Larry Hulse as the interim city manager effective May 31st, 2014. I think that I will, well, the full council, I think, had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Hulse. I think quickly I'll turn it over to Mr. Coleman. You want to give us a quick update on it?
I'll eventually move this with enthusiasm. Larry's been a great leader, worked his way up from assistant director to director to city, assistant city manager. This is very appropriate, and I don't mean any disrespect, but one of the things that kept saying up, that kept coming up as we considered Larry was, that is an enormously safe decision, because he's so steady and has such a good commitment to the city. So in our packet is a roll call created with the help of the city attorney and our human resources director. It appoints Mr. Hulse. Let's be clear about it. We're making the decision today, but he's not city manager, interim city manager, until May 30th, when Rick Clark leaves. But hopefully, we'll have a reduced period of time, because we'll find the candidate that we want, the permanent candidate, and bring them on. I don't know if Mr. Hulse has any comments, but I think the roll call is pretty clear, and I couldn't be happier. Two points I'd like to make.
It does say the 31st, by the way. We don't want Mr.
Yeah, that was a.
City manager to lose a day here.
Yeah, so he, he's city manager up until midnight, and then Larry takes over at midnight, something like that?
12:01.
12 midnight with one second past.
Okay. All right. We hope, we hope Mr. Clark is alert and wide awake up until.
I will be.
Two quick points.
But 12:01, you know, I'll be sound asleep.
Two quick points I want to make, to make sure that the council is really clear that there's a lot of transparency in this, and everybody's input is valuable. Between now and May 30th, we're going to set some specific goals for Mr. Hulse, and we'll report back. The roll call provides for everybody to have input into that. And then we've provided incentive plan for Mr. Hulse, that if he reaches those goals, at the conclusion of his interim period, he will, he will get those. That's point number one. Point number two, one of the things that's come up during this process, and Larry and I have had the chance to talk about it, we talked about it in his interview, is the fact that we chose somebody that's currently in the city manager's department means there's reduced personnel and ability to get all the jobs done. Mr. Clark and before him, others have kind of used this idea of bringing people in from other departments with particular expertise. And as we develop goals, I know Mr. Hulse has some thoughts about maybe bringing in on a temporary basis, some additional help to the city manager's office, and I've asked him to make sure that he reports that out, as he knows how that will happen. Obviously, that will be dependent upon what the goals are and what we're hoping he will accomplish, so he brings in the specific skills that we need. So with that, I will move the appointment effective the end of May, May 31st, the mayor tells me, and congratulate Mr. Hulse. We'll have plenty of time to talk about Mr. Clark in the coming couple of months, so I'll save that for another time, but.
Any other comments? Anybody? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Hulse.
Seven, yes?
Item 46, this is on the revised project plan for the joint application with the Des Moines Metropolitan Reclamation Authority, WRA, to the Homeland Security Emergency Management Department, and approving a first amendment to the 28E agreement with WRA for the joint application of administration and funding of a project plan pursuant to the Iowa Flood Mitigation Program. Council Communication number 14-157. Mr. Manager, do you want to give us a quick overview of this plan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. At the last meeting, there was discussion about the sign ordinance and some concerns that folks principally along Merrill Hay Road had, and you all asked us to look at a moratorium. Oh, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong subject. I just thought 12:01 soon enough, I guess. I looked out and saw Scott Sanders, and he was giving me the sign out there that I was on the wrong subject, so, okay. This particular item, I'll try to get this right, Mr. Mayor and council, it has to do with the.
Let's start over.
This is.
Let's push restart. We're okay.
Okay. This is, this is an item on your agenda. Last time you approved an application for flood funds to the state was a joint application with the city and WRA. WRA folks have come back and said that they want an amendment to add some, a project into the, into our application. So this is a relatively minor item, but it does amend the application that you approved, and your additional approval is needed in order for this to go forward. It doesn't adversely affect our ask of the state, but it does help the WRA, and is therefore helpful to us as well. So we do recommend it to you.
Scott, does that pass inspection? Okay, good. Any questions? Anybody? Do we have a motion to that effect? Been moved?
Seven, yes?
There was one extra item that was filed after 5:00 PM on Wednesday preceding the council meeting, and has been included in this amended agenda. This item is the setting the date of hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to further regulate the operation and allowed location of electronic signs, and imposing a temporary moratorium on the approval of new electronic signs. The date of that hearing will be May 19th of 14. The sponsors were myself and Councilmember Gray. Council Communication number 14-158. I'm going to quickly turn it over in one second here to Councilmember Gray, if you have any comments. But I will also, Bill, ask that we have a whole set of letters and emails from folks supporting the moratorium that I would ask to turn in for motion to receive and file. You want? Yeah, whatever, if you'd like. Okay. We'll go ahead and do that. I will say that we have many, many emails, I think we put it off about 10 here, that we have just received and filed, given to Clark. I think probably what we should do is, let's start with a staff presentation of what it is that we're doing, and then you can respond to that, if that'd be easiest.
Mayor, County, and members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. On March 10th, city council had a workshop and identified two changes to the code regarding electronic signs that you wanted staff to pursue. The first was a change to the code to require conversion credits to be used on the same corridor where they are earned. Second change was to amend the code to clarify that the operational standards that are currently in the code for electronic signs, larger electronic signs, would, such as eight-second message duration, brightness, dimmer controls, et cetera, that those provisions would apply to all electronic signs regardless of size. The resolution before you this evening sets the date of public hearing for May 19th. We do anticipate that the Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on May 1st to make a recommendation to you on those changes. And then Roger Brown is here to explain the exact provisions of the moratorium, which is under consideration tonight, so, thank you.
Roger?
Mayor, members of council, Roger Brown, Assistant City Attorney. Hopefully, each of you have a copy of the amended resolution that was sent out this afternoon. You can tell that you have the latest one, because there's highlighted language or bold language in paragraph four on page three. If you have, if you don't have such a copy, I'll have one for you. The action before you is a resolution that schedules a public hearing on the ordinance. The ordinance has not been finally drafted. We have preliminary drafts. We will have it prepared in time, that it will be on file with the city clerk at the time we publish notice on it. It will be presented to the Plan and Zoning Commission for a report and recommendation. It may be further changed at the commission, and will come to you. At this point, the plan is to bring it back to you on the 19th of May. The resolution before you also imposes a temporary moratorium on electronic signs and off-premises advertising signs. The original resolution that was given to you was a very broad moratorium. The highlighted language in the later resolution narrows the focus of that, so that it, the change of a, the construction of existing, well, the construction of electronic sign that meets all of our zoning requirements, and agrees to comply with the expected requirements for operation, and that is the, don't operate it showing video, have eight seconds of display between transitions. Those requirements that have applied to off-premise advertising signs, we anticipate that those will be applied to all electronic signs in the future. And so if someone agrees to comply with that, at least, and to be subject to those requirements, if that is in the final ordinance, those would be allowed to proceed, because we would have accomplished what we're expecting to accomplish through the proposed regulations. So with the, with the narrow focus of this moratorium, it is intended to more directly match what Mr. Ludwig just described, as far as what was presented to the city council at your study session.
All right. Does anybody have any questions of either one of our staff? Does anybody have any questions of either one of our staff folks?
Yeah, Roger.
Under the current ordinance, they still have to go before the Board of Adjustment. If there's any deviations, is that still going to apply?
Well, for purposes of the moratorium, it's that they, to be exempt from the moratorium, they have to strictly comply with the zoning ordinance as it's now written. I would interpret that to mean that if they have to have board relief, they need to seek relief from this moratorium first.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. You guys might want to hang out in case there's any other questions, but we'll ask for our speakers. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Ray Kosis. I'm the General Manager of the Fairway Outdoor Advertising North Central Division located in Rochester, Minnesota. We, first of all, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak before you this evening. This has been kind of a confusing time for us as we have billboards in 90 of 99 counties in the state of Iowa, but so few in the city of Des Moines, that we really hadn't paid much attention to the climate in the city as to what was going on with digital billboards. We do know that there's a large change in the, because of the technology, in the demand for these from our advertisers. In addition, we work with the communities for any sort of public service announcements, amber alerts, and things of that nature, which most communities find to be very helpful. We have 15 of these digital billboards in cities such as Marshalltown, in Mason City, Fort Dodge, and we decided to take a look at our entries into Des Moines as, as I mentioned earlier, we have a demand from our advertisers to give somebody some competition. There is no other competition besides the one other company in the city. So we started contacting the staff to ask what the requirements were. We were given very helpful and useful information. We decided to pursue doing something in the city, and we had started negotiations with our property owners to deal with the leases. And we were notified Friday morning on a voicemail that no sense in you coming down to apply because we're putting a moratorium in place and your application would not be accepted, it would be rejected, which sounded as though there was a presumption of the moratorium being approved. And I certainly understand the need or the desire to make some changes to it, but we would have welcomed the opportunity to have invited our property owners, our customers, or at least the business community, to also send in their emails and make their phone calls and send letters stating their positions. This is the trend in our industry, and I do want to point out that the structures we have, which only number 10, are in legal locations or were in legal locations when they were built. They're not in residential areas, they're in commercial areas. And the current ordinance requires us to remove a non-conforming structure to convert one of our others to a digital display, which means part of the original ordinance, as I read it, was to reduce the number of billboards, which in fact that would do. So consequently, I think what I'm asking you to do tonight is to take a consideration as to the situation we are in, which means the application we tried to submit today and was told that we cannot accept it. And we were told that this came from the legal counsel, the corporate legal counsel. So we do not have an application on file at this point. We ask that that be given us an opportunity to at least file that application, and then allow us to again participate in any changes that we can add to the ordinance. I've been in this business for 32 years, I've been involved in city plannings for billboards, and I think I have something I could offer to help you as well as the business community. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me some background on what you've done for the community with providing billboard space for advertising? You talked about amber alerts and stuff, but I don't think you've done any of that here in Des Moines, so I'd like to have a detailed summary of what you've done in Des Moines.
Right. Well, the amber alert program that we offer is only available on digital billboards. It is connected with the Sheriff's Department or the whoever controls your amber alert system. We have done things for a variety of public service fundraisers. We have done things for various, City of Faribault, Minnesota, the Sheriff's Department uses it to announce the opening of the swimming pools or to drive carefully.
I want Des Moines.
We have no digitals in Des Moines.
But you've got other billboards that you could do public service announcements on. Have you done any in Des Moines?
I've been in this position for 45 days, so I apologize for not knowing the answer to that. But I would tell you that we do in every community, so I would think over the period of time we've been here. We were operating as Wade Outdoor prior to Fairway buying that company. So there's a history. I'm sure there's some public service announcements that were used. In fact, we're using our digital in, outside this city, but it is being used by the Des Moines Visitors Chamber, Visitors and Convention Bureau right now, or will be in June.
I just request that we get the list of all of the public service announcements on the billboards in Des Moines when this comes back for final review.
All right. Thank you. I'll be happy to do that. And I'll send it to the board, entire council.
To the city clerk.
Okay.
Bill? Yes, I applaud you for doing your homework. You've talked to the staff, you've talked to the business leaders, you've talked to the advertisers. What I didn't hear you say, have you talked to any of the neighbors where these are planning on going up? Have you talked to the neighborhood groups that represent these people?
I did look into the neighborhood group for Meredith that was, I believe the gentleman spoke on the news story. I noticed that the areas we were talking about converting are blocks away from that neighborhood association. I don't know that we have been in touch with any residential neighbors because there really isn't any nearby where our existing structures are. They're all commercial.
I can tell you, we have gotten a flood of emails, and it's from concerned citizens that are going to be right where you're going to be putting this electronic sign up. And the one thing that keeps pounding back on us is the fact that they're going to be going 24/7, and nobody wants to have that light banging in their living room, or their dining room, or their bedroom when they're trying to go to sleep at night. One of the things you've got to do, you have got to see the residential impact in this, and this, and you haven't done that yet.
Well, sir, I appreciate what you're saying. As I say, this came upon us Friday, so we really haven't had an opportunity. We were under the impression from staff that we were doing everything according to regulation and what the ordinance required, so we really hadn't had an opportunity. And that's why I'm asking for a stay on this action to allow us to do that. Now, in reference to the 24/7, we don't function that way. Our lights go off at midnight, and we also have the ability to control the brightness. We also work with the city governments. If they have other stipulations or the community has stipulations, we're going to be flexible to meet those accommodations.
Well, I can tell you this, the residents are not impressed. And if you look on that Merle Hay corridor, that is probably the poster child for signs run amok. And we have, they've done their studies, they've got a dozen billboards already there. And you're going to try and squeeze a couple more in?
No, sir. We have one there. We're not squeezing any more in.
And then I've spent many years serving on the Board of Adjustment, and one of the things we've gotten done is that when we get an electronic sign being put in, we've gotten them to take the sign down in that same corridor. You're not going to be able to do that, are you?
That would provide the other company with monopoly. You are correct.
Okay. Let me just, for your benefit, Ray, we would really solicit your input and advice as we have the public discussion around what this should look like. We want anybody's input that is either impacted or has an interest in this. So you're certainly welcome and invited to do that. Also, I think that there is an opportunity, if you have read the imposition of the temporary moratorium, that you can write a written application to the city clerk and request a relief from the moratorium and bring that to the next meeting, and we'll hear that as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was handed to me during this meeting, so I didn't really have an opportunity to read it.
No, I understand. That's why I wanted to make sure you saw that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. All right, we have alarms going off, it sounds like.
No other questions?
All right, anymore? Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak on this item? I might ask, it looks like there's quite a number of folks here. How many folks are planning on speaking on this? We've got, we've had two already. We've got one, two, three here. We've got four, we've got five. Are there any over here that plan on speaking? Okay, so we have five more. Council, what do you think? Three minutes, please?
Three minutes, perfect.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name's Tom McFadden, I'm with Eastern Iowa Tire of Des Moines. We're currently in the process of closing on a piece of land on Northeast 14th Street.
We're aware of it.
There's a sign on there that we're working with Clear Channel to move, and we're about a week away from closing on that property. So one of the things we need to do is move that sign for closing, and they're putting in a digital sign.
I think that we...
Have you read the...
Yeah, if you read the revised amendment, it should...
If you read what's in bold on item four.
Okay.
You should fit that.
Apologies, guys.
Yeah. All right.
You should be okay.
Thank you.
But we would also like to have your input as we move forward. So if you would like to participate, we'd like to hear from you.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'd ask everybody else that plans on speaking if you could kind of stand up and get over on the south wall here so we kind of get an idea who's left. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and council members, Jason Bulliam, 2113 52nd Street, President of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. I just want to preface my remarks by saying, we just, we're kind of finding out a lot of the specifics about this on Thursday and Friday of last week, so we didn't have an opportunity to convene an official board meeting, nor were we able to gather our general membership because our bylaws require seven-day notice on that. So when I'm speaking to you here tonight, I don't want you to think that I'm representing the official position of our board or our general membership, but I think a lot of the remarks that I'll make are consistent with where our group has been over the years on this. If possible, I'd like to use the overhead, if that's available.
Yes.
Because there was a comment made by Council for Fairway that these signs are in strictly commercial areas. I think what you can see here is that from 57th Street near Aurora, you're standing on the other side of the street, and that sign looms high above the backyards of these residential properties. And that's more or less the case for all billboards that line the Merle Hay corridor. Councilman Gray made the remark that Merle Hay could arguably be the poster child for signage run amok. I think that's a fair argument. Another picture that is a similar vantage, right there, that's the Fairway sign near Aurora and Merle Hay. So that's what folks looking out their back window would possibly see. Of course, we don't have enough information at this point to know exactly what the orientation would be or which way it would be facing. That gives you a good idea of what the impact can be for residents. I would submit that maybe it wasn't appropriate to allow signs like that in the first place when they're so close to residential properties, but we have to be even more sensitive when we're talking about converting it to digital. There's the prospect for very, very negative impacts. With respect to the two locations that Fairway would like to convert to digital, one is at approximately 5901 Douglas, that's kind of in the vicinity of Earl May. The other, of course, is close to the northeast corner of Merle Hay and Aurora. Those are, if, let's assume that those permits are granted, we would then have a minimum of four digital billboard faces within half a mile of each other because we already have the two-sided digital billboard at the northeast corner of Merle Hay and Douglas. So that would be, you know, three very large, or I'm sorry, three or four very large, very bright billboard signs that are proximate to residential neighborhoods. So when the argument's made that it's strictly a commercial area, I would respectfully differ with that. If I could just make one more point, and then I'll move on. The way the current system works, when a permit is applied for to convert to digital, nobody knows what's coming. So you can have a static billboard one day, a few days later you can have a digital billboard, and there's no opportunity for a neighborhood or an adjoining property owner to really weigh in or appeal that if there's the potential for a negative impact. I hope that we look at those things during the moratorium and when we consider additional regulations on these signs. Thanks for your time. Thanks for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
My name is Don Chestnut with Chestnut Signs, 971 Northeast Broadway. Basically, I've just got some information here that I would like to submit. It's from the International Sign Association and the DOT. They've taken surveys and come up with some results from some studies and stuff on the safety and stuff of missing centers. Originally, I thought this was going to be a moratorium on even the small signs until I got to think tonight also. But I'd like to just submit these so that you could have good, educated...
Move to receive and file information.
That's it.
Thank you.
Do you want to, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Foes? Thank you. Receive and file. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. We want to, I've been checking with neighborhood leaders throughout Des Moines. This discussion and moratorium, the possibility of moratorium, has been discussed at two different meetings of Des Moines neighbors, with lots of comments, lots of people in support. And again, today, just to say that we wholeheartedly endorse the move to put a moratorium on the signs and to allow additional study. I applaud the award won as they are going through this process and spearheading it, and their attention to detail and their study has gone a long way to other people in the city beginning to look at their particular wards, their particular business corridors, and realize that the, that the impact of signs, no matter how we look at them, has a great, at times a great detriment to the city in a whole as it goes to clutter, a visual clutter. I use an illustration on the northeast side of Des Moines where we had the fairgrounds to put up their two digital signs. And when they started, it was like two beams, highlight beams are, what do you call those things that flash up in the sky? But they're flashed down to the neighborhoods because every time those things went on and changed, you could just see the whole neighborhood light up. Well, fortunately, the fairgrounds were very responsive to feedback, and they cut the brightness of those signs to a little bit more bearable. It is amazing how much it affects entire residential areas. What we are concerned about at Des Moines neighbors is this issue of where do you go from here on there? And looking at this issue of what is going to be the time factor after the moratorium? What's the study? What's the purpose of the study? And will we actually have some ordinances in place at the end of the moratorium? Or is this simply tied into this long study, regulation study that we're having that passed in the budget? So are we actually looking for some clear-cut guidelines that's going to come out in three months or two months, or what? And then what kind of impact will the study have upon allowing for public input? And then the last question I have, maybe somebody from staff can answer this. Can you give me a definition of electronic signs? Because we have digital signs, we've got video signs, we've got signs that are mechanical. What exactly is the definition, so we're clear about electronic signs? Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Bill, I'm going to turn over to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been on the Board of Adjustment for 13 years and having an opportunity to hear all of these sign adjustments, variances that want to go in here, and you don't realize what we have here in the city compared to what we've got outside the city.
the city. To give you an idea, I drove through Urbendale to get here this afternoon, and I drove past a Come and Go, a Firestone, and a McDonald's. And I got on the free interstate, came up Merle Hay, and I saw the same stores. McDonald's, one of the McDonald's has about a 25-foot pole sign, and the other one has a 17-foot pole sign. Firestone has a pole sign. You know, we, we need to get ourselves into the 21st century, folks. This is a, you know, I, I see the horrible clutter we've got on there. And you, and what, what bothers me on this is that when you look out there, those signs are beating down on our neighbors. The people have to sit there and see that. And while Ray may say that his is off at midnight, not everybody else's is. So I'm going to move that we enact this moratorium, and I'm fully in favor of making sure that I get in constant contact with that committee, because I want to be a part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gray, just to ask you, the staff recommendation is that you also authorize us to come back in a couple of weeks with some additional language to address-
Absolutely. I'd love that.
...part of your motion.
Yes. I want to see, back in two weeks, that'd be the 21st?
Yeah.
Would that be a workshop or a council meeting?
Well, it would be a council meeting. If you'd like it on a workshop, we can, we can discuss it at that time as well.
It wouldn't be a bad idea.
So it's going to be, we're going to have a presentation and a workshop, and then we'll actually take action that evening on the-
Right.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor, we had a question about what is electronic sign? And when you think about it, most signs have electricity to them. I'm assuming myself that we're talking digital here?
Prayer members of the council, the term that's often, that's intended to be used here is electronic display signs. Those would be the ones that, best way to describe it is they look like television. They aren't the old tube type, but they use LED or individual small lights. Depending on how they're operated, they can be static, but they can also give the appearance of motion. And it's the appearance of motion or of a video display that has raised so much concern. There are multi-face signs. The most infamous of those was probably the one that went in on Court Avenue shortly after we changed the regulations down there, where there were individual triangular-shaped pieces that rotated, so you got to see three different scene, screens on the same billboard. This moratorium is not addressed at those. It's, it's addressed at the video display signs, which have the, or could, could be used, much like a television screen. And the roll call that's in front of you sets a hearing for May 19th, so if you wish to change that, it can be changed certainly, but the resolution-
But that's, that's the 60-day moratorium that we're talking about.
That's, the first, first part of action is to set a date of hearing on amendments, and so it sets a date of hearing on May 19th. The moratorium extends through that date, and then the next two meetings to allow for first and second readings, if required.
But there's, I'm sorry, just two, two quick comments. One's a question. But we don't have, that's the, that's a permanent ordinance after the moratorium is done. By tonight's action, we do create the kind of so-called hardship or-
The appeal process.
Yeah. So, so that's in place, correct?
That, well, that will come back to us on the 21st, though, correct?
In two weeks.
In two weeks.
Any requests?
Any, it doesn't have to come back to us.
Right, it doesn't have to.
So the point I want to make is, I'm, I'm going to draw a really hard line on my own vote for hardships and exemptions to this until we write it. I, I think it's important. I think Bill's exactly right in his experience on the, the zoning board of adjustment is, is wise. So to me, while that language is there, and I think necessary, personally, I'm going to draw a hard line on it, and it really has to be around situations where the council has taken previous action, or it's part of a, of a situation that's more complicated and that we've already taken action on. And other than that, I don't, I don't intend to open that wide open, and I just want to say that for the record, both that, that it isn't intended to be an easy route to divert around the moratorium.
I'd like to, Mike, could you step up just for one second? I'm, I'm hopeful that we've been, those of us that served on plan and zone have been waiting for some regulations and ordinances concerning a lot of things. But certainly, as it relates to billboards, and I think owners of billboards, companies and, and any of these digital properties need to sort of understand where we're going. And I'm, I'm looking to you to get some guidance, not only from your staff, but hopefully something that your Planning and Zoning Commission can live with. So we're going to look for input from this staff up here, but I'm hopeful that we can move this, this forward and, and get some, some input before we make a final decision here that meets all the, the questions, shall we say, that all these council members have had, plus all the citizens have had over the recent past and distant past, that is asked to have this, this issue addressed. So I'm, I'm hopeful that all of our staff will put their heads together, and, and let's move this, this item forward.
Again, at our March 10th work session, we presented the history on the review of these ordinances, and the last review was in 2008, specifically regarding the billboards. Those are the current rules that are in place. As we identified in that presentation, and also this evening, the two changes that we are proposing during this moratorium are to require conversion credits to be used on the same corridor where they are earned, and then a change to the electronic display requirements to make sure that those, it's very clear that those apply to even very small signs, 24 square feet or less. Other changes were not directed at that workshop by the council, and ultimately would have to come up through the overall zoning code update, which you approved in your budget, which our goal was to have the additional staff onboard July 1 or shortly thereafter, and then start into that code. The purpose was to keep this very limited at this time because of the time it takes to get into that, that larger project. Overall, sign code update was going to be a part of the, the larger project.
Okay, let me, and I've said this before, so I hate to be repetitive, but this is one of those items where, as Bill pointed out, we've received lots of input from citizens, and we've received input from, from business owners as well, some in the sign business. And so I think we need to put all of our collective heads together to work on this. I mean, I've heard from, from parents that are concerned about signs that are sitting on the, across the street from grade schools, that are deeply concerned about what's going on in, in some of those locations. I've heard from residents who, as was pointed out this evening, that Jason had a picture of, that these signs are going on and off 10,800 times a day to change whatever it is. So it's, it's really a recognized issue by people that not only travel by them, that may be customers, but also people that live near them. And I think we have to put our collective minds together to, to resolve this. We have citizens that are very, very concerned about where we're going with this. So hopefully, we, we're giving you the right direction to move forward appropriately.
Mayor, one question.
Please.
This moratorium is going to go expire on June 26th, but you're not going to have anybody onboard until July 1st. Is there capability of extending this, so that you can bring staff onboard?
I would have to defer to our legal department on the extent of it. The intent was to get these two changes done during that timeframe. So clearly, I believe we're prepared to come to the council before the end of May with a overview of the zoning ordinance update and kind of timeline and setting some goals for that project. And so if it's the council's desire, when we present that kind of overview, if, if signs is the number-one issue you want tackled first, then we could order it in that, in that manner. Again, this was to address the immediate concern, which was, there was a concern that signs were being converted on corridors, credits were being earned by taking down a billboard somewhere else in the city, and that in the instance of Merle Hay, they felt like they were getting more than their share of digital billboards.
I think both the manager and the city attorney would like to make a quick comment. Which one of you would like to go first?
Well, I think my comments will probably be more general, so if I could. Mr. Mayor, council members, I just want to try to summarize what I, what I think you've done here. I think there are three different things that you've talked about. One is by this action, you would impose a moratorium. Two, you've said there's a couple hardship issues that you want us to bring back in a couple of weeks. We'll do that, and, and we'll do a workshop at that time, so we'll have an opportunity to workshop, to talk about that in detail and its implications, and then we'll have the action prepared for that agenda, should you decide to go forward with it. And the third thing, just listening to this last piece of conversation, Mike has said to you that there are a couple, three specific recommendations were, that were discussed at the workshop before to deal with signs. It's not the full-blown effort, but a couple of specific things.
Yeah.
And maybe it would be a good idea, if that workshop in two weeks, that we touch base on those again, so you hear what those are. It'd be a bit repetitive, but, but this is a very complicated subject, and perhaps we had to just touch on those again, so that you're clear what we're working on during this moratorium period. And I think, Mike, the idea is at the end of the moratorium, we would have for you these very specific things that you could implement at that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like we're suggesting there's a period after that. This is set up so that during the moratorium period, we're actually preparing those, those very specific amendments that we talked about before, and I'm suggesting we'll review those again for you in two weeks. So those are the three things I'm thinking about. Moratorium, hardship consideration in two weeks, and then also in two weeks, in addition to the hardship consideration, we will review for you the specific amendments that we're working on that would be accomplished, worked on during the moratorium period, and brought back to you for your review and consideration at the end of the moratorium.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. The roll call that's in front of you makes mention of the moratorium as a way to maintain the status quo while council considers how to move forward. By definition legally, and to, to make sure that it is constitutionally firm rather than infirm, the moratorium has to be basically as narrow as possible and as brief as possible. So at this point in time, I wouldn't suggest that the moratorium be extended. They can't run perpetually, they can't maintain the status quo forever. It's only in, the idea is it's only until the ordinance can be adopted and you have an opportunity to flesh that out, as fully as you need to. It doesn't have to be extremely condensed. On the other hand, it, it can't go on ad infinitum. If, as you move forward, and given what the manager has outlined for a process, if at some point in time, prior to the expiration of the moratorium, it becomes clear that you need to have some sort of extension, albeit briefly, then I would suggest that we look at that closely at that point in time to make sure that it's appropriate.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, that we weren't behind the horse, and so we don't get, we come up to January, June 26th, and we don't have any plan, and we're still fighting to get the, our arms around the entire ordinance. So that was my only concern. I agree, I think we shouldn't probably extend it forever, but I just want to make sure that we get things moving forward, and we have something that we can get our arms around and vote on. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I'd like to move to receive and file this billboard fact sheet that we received from a neighborhood leader north of Grand, and refer it back to legal for their opinion on it, and I think we've got a motion on the floor to do first, so.
Okay. You've got a, you have to vote.
Seven yes?
All right. Mr. Moore wants to receive and file additional information that I think we all have a copy of, and refer it to City Legal for their input.
Yes.
Well, what, what's the-
You've got it right in your hand.
Yeah, you got it.
I'm being facetious, but that it's factual, or that-
Yeah, I'd like him to take a look at it. I think that sometimes we have stuff that's given to us as factual, but we don't get all the facts that go with it, and maybe this may not even be pertinent in Iowa, some of the stuff in here. Our state code may not allow it.
Okay, we have a motion. We can, all in favor, say aye on this one?
Absolutely.
All in favor, say aye. Receive and file. Aye. Close. Item passes. All right, let's go back and open the hearings on item 37. Note that it looks like it is 536. Item 37 is on the vacation conveyance of a dead-end segment of the East-West Alley Right-of-Way in the vicinity of 2125 High Street to Freedom Financial Bank for $2,400, Council Communication Number 14-141. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. We'll open the hearing on that item, is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this vacation and conveyance?
I'll move item 37A and B.
All right. Any comments? Seeing none.
Seven yes?
On the vacation conveyance of Wagner Street in North-South Alley Right-of-Way adjoining 105th Avenue, and for the conveyance portion of a vacated Southwest 6th Street, south of Cherry Street to Polk County, in exchange for Polk County-owned property required for relocated Southwest 6th Street, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires, again, six votes. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this? Again, an additional vacation and conveyance. Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
Thank you.
Item's moved.
Was that you?
Seven yes?
Item 39. On the vacation conveyance of Allen Park, 504 Southeast 6th Street to Christopher S. Buchanan for $270,000, Council Communication Number 14-148. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to item 39 on the vacation conveyance of Allen Park? Give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Scotty Buchanan, owner of Scotty's Body Shop. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thanks for allowing me to speak. What I am trying to do is purchase this property that's over here on 504 Southeast 6th Street, also to relocate my existing business for a bigger and better use. The property, although it is an M1 zone, we are trying to treat it as if it's a three-seat A-type zoning. We are going to work with the City of Des Moines and the Historical East Village Committee, and also with Mr. Gottlieb here, who's in that ward. We'd like to make a building design that is consistent with the urban development plan, so, and there'll be no pole signs there.
Hey! Hey! He's a good listener. Doing my job a lot easier.
That's it.
All right, Scott, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody want to vote for pole signs?
I'll, I'll move A and B.
And 39, too, right?
Yeah, 39, A and B.
Seven yes?
All right, item 40. On a proposed sale of city-owned property at 505 East Grand Avenue and 505 East Grand, 2505 East Grand LLC for $369,600, Council Communication Number 14-155. Is there anybody in the council to vote on this, or even would like to speak? So let's ask a motion.
I'll move 40.
Item 40 has been moved. Item 41, a proposed fourth amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Guthrie Avenue Business Park Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number 14-153. This would seem like a simple item, but I know the city manager would like to make a quick comment on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Actually, Matt Anderson has got a little presentation he's put together, and would like to give you some background on Guthrie Avenue. I'd just tell you, as he's coming forward, this is one of the areas that if, if you think about the city and think about- about the city and think about the classic definition of slum and blight, this area met it. When the city first began working on it, it was among the most unsightly areas one can imagine, and the transformation there has been just remarkable. Matt's going to kind of give you some background and some details about that particular story.
And by the way, I think that we've had a lot of discussion about this area over the past couple of years, and I am very excited to hear about our planning and replanning and rethinking for the future of the Guthrie Avenue Business Park. So Matt, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mayor, county, members of the city council, Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. Rick's probably a little gracious in calling as a presentation, but I'll share a little information. So just, and this is really crude graphic. Rick wanted me to pull together a couple maps for you and a little bit of background information this afternoon, so just, you know, in 1990, this area, boy, that doesn't show up very well at all. You can see where I outlined, so Guthrie Avenue Business Park is essentially a rectangle up in that shape. This area, this that I modeled up here and just outlined, these were the parcels that were acquired for, that were needed to be acquired for development in 1990, really the whole park essentially. It was a lot, it was salvage yards and vacant uses, and we've got it down to the point now where we're down to our final piece, this little square here, little 21-acre piece. Those are the final parcels to be acquired. An old cement factory and some salvage yards are really the primary uses there. The, you know, our ability to acquire land was severely hampered when we lost our eminent domain powers, as most of you are aware, our economic development eminent domain powers. So now we're just on the open market, and as we really need to wait for properties to become available and we buy them at fair market value. And that's what this plan amendment is preparing for, is identifying these final pieces as acquisition parcels and gearing us up and putting us in the position to go work with those owners who do want to, who do want to sell and make some acquisitions. We have, these are a little bit dated, but we have some before and afters of really what we've done in this park. This is Van Meter Electric Supply Company. You can see before, just a vehicle maintenance building, a lot of outdoor storage going on. Here's library binding, really a rundown houses and garages that turned into a great business up there, and this is a great one, so. This, you can't see very, this is a pile of tires sitting here. So you've got, you've got a lot of great momentum that's gone on, and as resources become available, we want to be able to continue to grow and capture that momentum and grow the park. And you saw in your, in your council communication, just a quick highlight, over 700 jobs have been created in the park, and evaluation that's gone from, if I can find the number, from 3 million in assessment in 1988 to 40 million today. So a great success story on the northeast side of Des Moines.
All right, Matt, thank you.
I think this creates some energy too, and it went on farther to the north where it's gone up to Hall and now up to Euclid where we've got some more construction and buildings that's been filled that were vacant for a number, the Linux Building, for instance, and so it's really has, has helped out over there in that area.
I agree.
Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
We're finished, so I'll certainly move item 41.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
Item 42. On the application for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service is requested by Brady Johnson, NPI Limo Services LLC, Urbandale, Iowa. Staff recommends denial. Council Communication number 14-149. Is anybody in the audience to speak to this, and maybe specifically Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, county, members of the city council, Dan Manning, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300, Lillis-Homaly Law Firm, representing NPI Limo Service, Inc. That's Brady, Brady Johnson. The request is for a certificate of public convenience and necessity, and just want to give you just a little bit of background. I have, you know, Brady Johnson here with me tonight and addressed the council as well. But Mr. Johnson has been working for NPI for the past two and a half years, and he's been in charge of day-to-day operations for the facility. An opportunity came to him in December of 2013, and that was to purchase this, this operation from Mark Kirchner. You have in your packet a letter from Mr. Kirchner vouching for Mr. Johnson, and we just want to emphasize that Mr. Johnson has been working for NPI and is working, NPI is functioning elsewhere, but obviously since he's taken, taken over the operation, the process is that he as an owner of the limousine service has to be vetted by the city, and that process has been initiated. And what we're here tonight to ask for is that Mr. Johnson be given an opportunity to, to move forward with the operation of his business. He has five employees, he has three vehicles that he's responsible for with this operation. We think that it's critical for his ability to function with this business is to be able to operate in Des Moines, also provides a service that Des Moines, I'm sure, is also concerned about. What we, what I thought I'd do is just have Mr. Johnson address you specifically and see if you have any questions about, about this application.
Mayor and the members of the city council, my name is Brady Johnson. My address is 3329 109th Street, Urbandale, Iowa. I am here today asking the opportunity to operate and advertise my limousine service in the city of Des Moines. Like Dan had said, I have owned, I have operated on the daily operations in this company for the last two and a half years, and being a new business owner, I have taken in all the responsibilities affiliated with my company. With the effort I have already put into this business and support for my family, I decided to make this my living. I do have a great desire for this company and for these services, and I would really like to make these available to the residents and businesses of the city of Des Moines. And at this time, I am asking for your support on this matter. If there's any questions, please ask.
Ms. Hensley?
Can you talk a little bit more? You're currently operating this limousine business outside the city of Des Moines, and you've actually been running it for the last two and a half years? Just to make it clear, understand that?
The last two and a half months, I have been operating outside the city of Des Moines, but previous to that, we were already licensed on the city of Des Moines. So to sustain that business, I am looking to get the city of Des Moines permit, because I have not been operating in the city of Des Moines since I became knowledgeable that I do not have the city permit.
Okay.
Previous owner had the permit and was operating-
Was operating in the city of Des Moines.
-through December of 2013. It's when Brady took over the ownership of the business-
Then he had to stop in Des Moines.
-had to stop operating in Des Moines. That's correct.
Okay. Okay, now, we do have a letter here that indicates that there's a reason for denial because of some issues with your driving record in the past.
Correct.
One of the things that we've typically done has been to provide support and allow people to go forward on a probationary period. Is that something that you would be receptive to?
Of course.
Yes. Mrs. Hensley, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a limousine driver's license?
Yes, I have a sheriff's license.
Okay. And so you actually provide the service outside the city of Des Moines?
Correct.
Mrs. Hensley? I think we ought to have that city attorney quickly comment towards what you're talking, towards which I think is a probationary license kind of a, of a thing, but I think we need to refer to City Legal and give us a quick update on their current position on that idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that it has been done in the past. Our suggestion would be if council decides to go with that route with this particular application, that the hearing be continued until the next meeting. We don't have a mechanism really by code that's been done ad hoc by council, and that could create some problems. So we would like an opportunity to bring you back something that would create the criteria that would be needed and the discretion that would be utilized by council in deciding whether or not to go forward with a probationary, including what particular aspects might go towards revocation or discontinuation of the probationary license. So rather than granting that license this evening, we would ask that you continue the hearing if that's the route council decides to go and allow us to bring back a mechanism for probationary license.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe just thinking about it slightly differently, what would the procedures be if the council chose to revoke a license that we granted based on some violation of driving code or, I don't know this for fact, we've never met before, but because of your situation, probably can't sustain another driving violation to maintain your license? So if he had another violation, he'd lose his license, he wouldn't have it? I mean, can the council easily revoke if that's what we chose to do?
Generally, upon notice and hearing, most of our licenses would require, that are granted by council also require that. I don't, I'll double check for you, but I believe it would be after notice and hearing for an opportunity for him to respond to whatever the accusations were that would meet the, the need for revocation.
I guess I would be of the opinion, based upon what we've done previously, that I'd be comfortable recommending that we continue it and give legal an opportunity to come back with an ordinance to deal with individuals on a probationary basis. Would that be possible within the next two weeks?
Yes, ma'am. We'll get it done for you.
Okay.
And is there, is there a timeframe of effectiveness of granting that after we pass it?
The ordinance would need to be granted prior to issuing the probationary license, but if you, I mean, we could place that on the agenda with the request to go forward for all three readings.
And then how, I'm just trying to help him understand, I mean, the process for getting from A to Z, I mean, is that, if we granted a license two weeks from today, can he operate the following day, or is there a notice? Do we have to publish it? Do we have to do all that?
No, sure. I believe you'd be able to, and Jennifer has anything contrary, but I believe you'd be able to operate the next day once the license is granted by council.
Okay. So my motion would be to continue this until the April 21st with legal coming back with the draft of an ordinance based upon a probationary period of time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, item 43. On Beaver Avenue, Streetscape, Beaver Crest Drive to Fagan Drive, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designation of the lowest responsible bidder as Concrete Technologies, Inc., Brad Baumler, president, Council Communication number 14-144A, approving the contract-
Little Beverdale happy dance.
...and the bond.
Little Beverdale happy dance.
And permission to sublet.
Come on, Mike, join in.
All right. The hearing is open. I think we have some folks who would like to speak to this.
Hallelujah. Mayor, county, and city council members, my name is Sheila Navis. I reside at 4340 Sheridan Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa. This has been a project long in coming for our neighborhood, and we sincerely and gratefully appreciate the support that the city council has demonstrated over the past few years. We appreciate that support, and likewise, the neighborhood has, I believe, stepped up to the plate. We have submitted to the city to date 250,000 of our $300,000 commitment to the city. We urge your support of this plan tonight to approve the plans and to award the bid and to get this project actually going. We would be thrilled, and as speaking on behalf of the fundraising committee, we really want to get this done. So we can see that with the groundbreaking ceremony, which we have tentatively scheduled based on your action tonight, we invite everyone to a groundbreaking ceremony on April 22nd at 1:00 at the corner of Beaver and Urbandale Avenue if you move forward on this and let the bids. And we feel too, very strongly, that with this very tangible, visible movement on this project, that we will continue to get support and financial donations to this effort. We've got engraved bricks, Mike keeps handing me piles of the forms, and so it's, we're excited, and we really do appreciate the past support that the city has demonstrated on our behalf, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your, your sticking to it, all of you, for these many, many years. Maybe you can do a parade or something and try to raise more money.
Hi, I'm Sasha Camper at 1804 38th Street. I would also like to second everything Sheila has said, especially our gratitude to the city for not giving up on this, for giving us support and, and helping us cross the hurdles that we had to cross in order to get to where we are today. I would also add to what Sheila said that in addition to the 250,000 remitted thus far, the number changes daily, but there's at least another 30,000 sitting in the bank, and even as, or as late as this past weekend, we had an additional pledge for 1,500. So the money keeps coming in, we're confident we're going to get there, and we're excited to see this move to fruition. I just ask everyone that's here in the audience that is also in favor of, of the Streetscape project, please stand. Eugene, are you standing? Thank you.
I'm in there, I'm with you. I'm with you.
And then lastly, what I, what I wanted to do is say that this is not only important in my mind just to Beverdale, it's critical to Beverdale, but I think it's also important to Des Moines neighborhoods as well. One thing that our group has talked about a lot, and we've struggled with, and the Neighborhood Association has struggled with, is that with all the investment that's gone on, both in downtown and at the suburb levels, the neighborhoods have struggled to figure out how do we compete? How do we stay competitive? How do we keep a vibrant neighborhood offering that people want to move to, operate a business in, and be a part of? And what's happened in downtown has been phenomenal, and I know that this group has been very critical for that, and it's a huge success, and you can pat yourselves on the back for what's happened. But I know there's also a report done by Capital Crossroads that I think discussed with this group back in October, and what they were able to show statistically was what we as residents have seen all along at the neighborhood level, that, you know, neighborhoods in Des Moines have struggled. There's needed investment at the housing stock level, at the infrastructure level, and the commercial development level. And I think this project addresses those things dead-on for Beverdale, especially when you couple it with the opening of Neighborhood Finance Corp. for us for a two-year period. You know, we've been open for 15 months for that program, and we've already seen 11.6 million of investment in that 15 months at the residential level, over 10 million of that non-forgivable, so private investment from individuals. So I think this is a really great example of what can go right with public-private partnership. I'd encourage you to think of ways to dual-track investment going forward, both at the downtown level and the neighborhood level, and I applaud you for your support.
Thank you very much. Want me to go first?
Whatever you want.
Wow! It's great being here, let me tell you. I'll let you have the finishing touches. You know, I've lived in Beverdale for 38 years, and this is absolutely the best moment that I can recall having happen. I hope everybody comes down to the groundbreaking and see what a great support system we have here. You know, we had a Herculean task of trying to get $300,000, and I started doing the math in my head, and I thought, well, let's see, 4,000 people, let's see, that equates to, whoops, we're not going to get there. But Sasha Camper, what a magnificent job of getting down, I think we're about 17, 7 away now, or?
And even less, it keeps, it keeps running.
That's what I love hearing. It, it, it really, you know, we've got something here that is a crown jewel here in Des Moines. Our parks are good magnets for bringing people together, but we've got a great entertainment district down there, a lot of thriving businesses, and we're going to make, we're going to dust this crown jewel off. I want to tell you, it is going to be the highlight you're going to see in the entire city. city. I hope the press is there, I hope everybody, this is going to be one of the greatest transformations that's happened in the Beverdale area, and I am so excited about it, and, you know, to have the group here, just, it makes you really proud to be not only in the city, but in the good old hamlet of Beverdale. So, great work, guys, what a wonderful job. Mr. Coleman?
The, the only downside is, I've, I've told a lot of people that have worked on this for fifteen years, so Gray's running around Beverdale saying, Coleman's worked on this for fifteen years, three months after I got there, we got it done.
There you go, that's the thanks you get, Eric.
I, I just want to lend, lend my compliments to the committee. All of us have worked with kind of grassroots committee people that have full-time jobs and families and hobbies, and there were a lot of down moments. At one point, I begged Rick Clark to go out, and we had a little meeting in the side room at Saints, and said, we can do this, we can figure this out, don't give up. There's been a lot of stages in this, but I, I hold with a lot of admiration to people that have, that have worked on this, and I think it will be great, I can't wait to get started. This did start a long time ago, we've raised a lot of money at different phases, but, but this will be a real shot in the arm to, you know, my home little neighborhood that I live back in now, so.
I don't think a smile's going to leave our face anytime soon, so it's with great pride, and I'm looking out to the hard-working people that, I want to move, we get this Beverdale Streetscape started. All right, and that groundbreaking is going to be?
April twenty-second. Tuesday. April twenty-second.
It's a Tuesday. Tuesday, April twenty-second, what time?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
At Beaver and Urbandale.
All right, be there, be there, everybody.
Item forty-three, I move.
Seven yes.
Yeah, that's right. We've talked about that a lot.
Yeah, we have.
All right, item forty-four, on the two thousand and fourteen Brick Street Repair Program Resolution Improving Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate and Designation of the Lowest Responsible bidder as TK Concrete, Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Council Communication number fourteen dash one thirty-four A is approving the contract and the bond. Is there anybody to speak to this item?
I'll move forty-four, forty-four A.
Mayor, I'd like to speak on this before we vote. I appreciate this letter that we received from the city manager with the brick streets from worst to best, but I think you misconstrued what I meant several weeks ago, and that is, capital in Des Moines in the early to mid nineties were determined to be two of the worst brick streets in the city. We did capital, we got about half of Des Moines done, and ran out of funds. And to me, this would almost be like getting three-quarters done with the bridge, running out of money, and saying, but we're going to go build another bridge because we got money over there. And I think that we should have started with Des Moines on this one, and gotten, gotten it finished, and then went down the rest of this list. I do know all these streets intimately, and even in my own mind, I can't believe Zwart Road isn't at the top of this list. But I support this, that was the message I was trying to convey at that time.
Seven yes.
All right, let's note that at six oh five, we completed the hearings. Could we have a motion to adjourn as city council and reconvene as board of health, please?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Animously, we now sit as board of health, and our first item this evening is approving the legal department to proceed with a court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the filing locations. A is fifteen twenty-four Clark Street, it's a building structure. B is thirty-five ten Cottage Grove Avenue, another building structure. C is nineteen forty-one Francis Avenue, it's a fire-damaged main structure. D is thirteen seventy-four York Street, it's a main structure. And E is fifty-nine eleven Southwest Ninth, it's a building structure. Is there anybody in the audience to speak concerning the legal department process, seeking court action, and the authority to abate the public nuisances at those addresses? Seeing none, could we have a motion for one A through E?
Move.
And I might just note that there's a property on Southwest Ninth, we're making progress?
Yes, we are.
This is the beginning of another commercial revitalization area.
I want to be cheering like you guys, Southwest Ninth. Yeah, I want to do the wave when, when it comes time for that.
Yep, but to, to keep up with Bill, you got to make something happen in about the next sixty days.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can get that accomplished.
All right, item two, notification from the American Security Insurance Company dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, stating their insured Dorothy Clark at twenty-nine thirty-nine East Ovid Avenue sustained a fire loss, and it is holding a fire escrow demolition reserve in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. Anybody here would like to speak to that notification from American Security Insurance? Seeing none, could we have a motion to move over that notification?
Move.
It's been moved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes, could we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We sit adjourned, thank you all for attending this evening.